This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome, everyone. This is December 20, not December, October 28th, 2020. The Clatsop County Board of Commissioners are meeting for a work session, a 5:00 p.m. work session. It is now 5:02. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussions, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. So we will start now, and we have a board communication, just kind of a check-in with the commissioners. Who would like to go first?
I'm unmuted. How about if I go first?
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson here. I went to a Woodworks Continuing Education Seminar entitled Sustainability from Forest Lawn Management Carbon Friendly Buildings, which was very informative. It turns out that Woodworks, a nationwide organization, has a new staffer in Portland for our region. Her name is Janelle Leaf Blad. And so she and I and Professor Shine from the Tallwood Institute had a follow-up phone call the next day. And as a follow-up to that, I am going to tour Ferris Brothers facility in Lyons, Oregon tomorrow to learn how mass plywood panels are constructed. Hot shot. So I suggested to the PIO that he should come with me and develop publicity materials, but he didn't think that was such a great idea, so I'm going to be on my own. I also attended the Oregon Broadband Advisory Council and have some notes from that. We had a broadband action team meeting. I can't even remember which day, a couple of days ago, to talk about what we're doing around the region for broadband. So we're going to have a new way to measure actual broadband coverage, not the questionable data that have come from other sources. So there'll be more information about that.
That's great, Commissioner Thompson. Would this also be in part of your commissioner reports?
Yeah.
Six o'clock meeting?
Tune you up.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, because we only have five minutes for this. So the next. Ah, Commissioner Nebiker, would you like to say howdy?
Howdy. Yeah, I'd also like to thank the county for the ballot boxes. Gearhart has a wonderful one, metal. It's very clearly marked, and I put my ballot in there, and it felt very safe. And I am really happy that we're doing it this way now. And I think it will inspire more confidence in our election process, and I'm really grateful for that. And also, this book. See this book? I don't know if you can see it.
It's called The Future We Choose.
Right.
Surviving the Climate Crisis.
Yes. And I've been reading it, and reading it is helping me to see it doesn't have to be a polarizing issue. It doesn't have to be us and them, either or. It is written by some very good writers, and it's helping, it's giving information about navigating this. So that, anyway, I'm just recommending it. That's everything I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Commissioner Webb?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to be muted all the time because I've got a really rambunctious dog here tonight. And so I'll be muting on and off. I don't have anything. I think everything I'll do during the meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Quayle?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. Good to hear you. Okay, and myself, I just want to say hello, everybody. So let's, let's, let's go on to the next. Are you guys getting the feedback like I am?
Sometimes.
Okay. Well, we'll keep going. I've got my little spare thing plugged in, but I don't know. Okay, so the next on the agenda is to talk about the agenda. Do we have any commissioner comments about tonight's agenda?
This is Commissioner Webb. I assume you're talking about the formal agenda in our meet, in our meeting.
I'm sorry. That's correct, yes.
I have a request, and that is that we move the discussion, the approval of the SAFE program, which is our fishing contract. I would like, number eight, I would like to request that that be moved to the business agenda.
Okay.
I discussed this with, with, with the county manager, and I assume staff is ready for this.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just make a request that that also gets stated at the beginning of the meeting so that it's in the minute. Thank you.
Sure.
And may I ask, when we do this, in what order will that be added to the agenda?
We could have it be number 12, the last business item.
Does that, does that, does that work for everyone? Okay.
Supposed to be, it's according to parliamentary procedure, it should be the first item in the business agenda.
Well, is the staff ready to go on the first item, county manager?
That'll be fine. We can just reference it as even 10A. So that, that'll be fine.
So, and procedure-wise, when I call for a motion for the agenda approval, I will be asking, someone will make the motion also stating, maybe Commissioner Webb, you'd like to do that, I approve the agenda with, with the, I'm not good at coming up with these words, but, but item number eight, it should be moved into the business agenda. Would that be adequate, Joanna?
Yes, it would be fine.
Do you understand what I'm asking, Commissioner Webb?
I think so. It should be a part of, what you're asking for is that it's part of the motion to approve the agenda?
Yes. So we're approving the agenda with the, with the change.
Okay, that's fine. I'll.
Is that, am I being clear enough, county manager? You look poised to help here.
That, that would be fine. I just think it's to amend the agenda, to move item eight to the first item under the business agenda.
So do we ask for a motion to amend it first and then do it, or?
Well, you'll, you will be approving the agenda, and so as part of that, that will include moving it. So.
Okay. Thank you. And then I also wanted to say that also on the agenda, we will be under number 10, the Fair Board Appointment. And my understanding of the proper way to do that is I will ask for a nomination. And in, in my, it's not, it's not in the agenda, but it's in my script, that I will now ask for a nomination. And one of the commissioners, I imagine Commissioner Quayle, who is on the Fair Board, will give us his first nomination. We will vote on that nomination, and then, I'm sorry, Commissioner Quayle?
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, then we will ask the clerk of the board to take, take a vote on that. And then if there's, and then if we need to, we'll move on to a second nomination. Okay? But if, if the first nomination passes, then that's, that's the person that will fill that slot to the end of the year. Okay, is that cleared, everybody?
Yes.
All right, very good. Anyone else for anything else on the, on the agenda? Okeydoke. I believe the next on the, on our work session agenda is the elections update. The woman of the hour here, well, actually, the woman of the next couple of weeks, I suspect, if you want to give us a report. And by the way, I hope you all know that Tracy is now a headliner in the local press. So good job on that. Okay, county clerk, please give us your report.
Yes. Well, as of today, we're at 51.39% turnout, which equates to 15,500 ballots. And puts us a full week ahead than we were the last presidential election, as far as turnout. So people are turning out early, which is great. Drop sites, thank you, Commissioner Nebiker, are working great. And everybody, everything's going really smoothly. And I'm just glad that people are being active this time. It makes it for some good excitement in the office. We start opening the ballots tomorrow, and then we'll start scanning them on Friday. And yes, Clatsop News came in and did an article on us. So I thought they did a pretty good job.
Excellent. County manager, I know I didn't ask this before, but should we also have another update in the board, or is this, you think, sufficient during the board meeting?
I think this is sufficient. I can give a little update as part of my scheduled update, so.
Okay, and county clerk, if you, Tracy, if you could plan on being there for the November 4th meeting also, I think we'd like to have another feedback from you. Okay?
I'll be there, but I'll be tired, but I'll be there.
Well, we have to amend that. We'll amend that. But it's, it's, it's quite an election this year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for being here. So the next, next on our agenda for the work session today is.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, thank you, ma'am. County clerk, I mailed my ballot, and so I wondered if there were a way for people who mailed our ballots in to confirm that they've been received. Is that going to be possible or not?
Yes, it is very possible. The Secretary of State has set up their portal. Well, we got feedback. It's at Oregonvotes.gov/MyVote. So it's O-R-E-G-O-N-V-O-T-E-S dot G-O-V forward slash MyVote, M-Y-V-O-T-E. You have to put in a little bit of credentials, your name, your date of birth, and then it'll take you and let you know if your ballot has been received. And it's usually about, we say, 48 to 72 hours after you get it that it shows up on the site.
Thank you, county clerk. Madam Chair, that's really useful information. I don't know if the county PIO has bandwidth to put out that information, but it seems to me that that's another way to confirm public trust and add public information right now for more confidence.
And Commissioner Thompson, we will push that out. So thank you.
It's, we have it up on our website and also in our Facebook page. So we push it out.
That's great. Last night on the news, I had heard, or some news program I was watching, that, that, that the postal service is saying today is kind of the, the last day to mail your ballot. Is that, is that your feeling? You're in Clatsop County?
Yes, that's, we're all seeing the same thing. All the clerks are saying, you know, give it, don't mail within a week to guarantee that we will get it, because you never know how long the mail system is going to take. And if you want us to get it, the best bet is to put it in a drop site after today.
Okay. So it's past 5:00, the mail's already gone out in Clatsop County? Drop it in a drop site rather than mailbox?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Excellent.
You're welcome.
And now I believe we'll move on to our Assistant County Manager, Monica Steele, for a report on the fiscal year 2020, 2021, first quarter financials.
I'm happy to announce that our new budget and finance manager, Jennifer Carlson, will be presenting you your first quarter financials for the 2021 fiscal year. So.
And I am happy to apologize to the.
No problem. I wanted an opportunity to share this here, and so now here it is. And she, she screen shares much better than I do. Well, so are. Let's see how this goes.
I'm sorry. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm Jennifer. It's nice to be here with you all. I'll try to get you all the information you need for the first quarter financials here. If you have any questions along the way, just holler at any time. Okay, so we've got the first quarter report for the fiscal year 2021 that we're going over. See if I can figure out how to change slides. There we go. A quarter overall expenditures for most of the funds are, as a whole, are currently coming in as expected. The revenues, for revenues, the unaudited beginning balances for several funds came in higher than projected. This is the result of realized savings within the funds as well as increased revenues in the prior fiscal year. So a couple of those you can see here are the general fund. It came in 2.4 million higher than budgeted. General Roads was 500,000 more than budgeted, and the special projects was 4.9 more than budgeted. And again, that was for the beginning balances that rolled over into our current fiscal year. Okay, here we have the first quarter, all of the funds revenue collections for the first quarter. This does not include that beginning balance that I was just talking about. On this, you'll see that the revenues for the 2021 year, if you, can you see my mouse on here? On the screen? Yeah, okay. You can see that this is our current year. We've got, we've received about 8.8 million as of the first quarter, and last year we were at 9.5 million. So it has decreased from what we've received at this point last year. We're thinking that has a lot to do with COVID. The room taxes are really down. I'll get into that a little bit more on the next slide. But overall, you know, we're pretty much in line with how it's been over the last couple of years, where we should be. Here we have, oh, let's see, I forgot to look at my notes. I've got a couple of other things on here, too, on this prior slide. Some areas where the county is currently exceeding in revenue collections, we've got recording fees are at 33%, building code license and permits are at 33%, public land preservation is at 34%, video lottery 37%, court fines 75%, animal shelter donations 135, and the timber 42%, just in the general fund. Okay, moving on. So here we have budgeted revenues and the actual amount collected, not including the beginning balance for the first quarter. So this is general fund only. I'm sorry, on that prior slide, I think I said that was general fund only. That was all funds. So the general fund has collected 14% of the budgeted revenues. The bulk of the budgeted general fund revenues are the property taxes, and the majority of these receipts come in the second quarter. So that's why that is so low at the 14%. And that's normal, as you can see. Not shown in the amount collected is the unaudited beginning balance that rolled over in the 2019-20 fiscal year, and that's approximately 14.4 million. As I mentioned in the earlier slide, that's 2.4 million higher than what we projected in the current year. So that's what we got on that one. Let's see here. Does this all making sense to everyone? Am I missing anything? Okay. Here we have the general fund major revenue sources. So this is just kind of an overview of what we had on the prior slide, just more detailed. We've got our property taxes, which are really low at that 97,000. Let's see, property taxes reflected in this chart are for the current year only and do not reflect any prior years. The majority of property tax collections are in the second quarter. So you'll see that next quarter, that will go up quite a bit.
Jennifer?
The timber tax, what was that?
Jennifer, I'm not seeing property taxes. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right here, this first column here. This is where I'm looking first, and then I'll get over to these other significant revenues. These are our major right here. So property taxes, 97,000, when we budgeted for the full year of 9.5 million. The timber revenue, we've got 1.3 million, which, this, and we also have the timber revenue for the special projects transfer. Where am I at?
Could I, could I ask for a total of those two? I mean, as I, I went to a meeting.
What are you, what are you looking for?
Timber revenue plus the general fund and the special projects transfer.
Yeah, there hasn't been a transfer to the special projects, actually. That's a zero.
But in the previous year, all I'm saying is when.
Oh, in the previous year.
Yeah, when we get these figures, what I'd like to see is the total of timber revenue, because I know I went to a meeting, and the assertion was made, or the implication was made that.
Please come back. Sorry.
Trying to do everything, yes. That the timber companies aren't paying revenue to the counties. And so I found that confusing, and I had to kind of scratch my head a little and look and see what's the total here, because if we look, almost 2.2 million and almost 1.4 million, so that, you know, that's a bunch of money. And I'd like to have complete data that are easily perceived in order for us to have really solid data-infused discussions. And I think it would help if those two were combined in some way, maybe on this slide itself. So I know I'm asking for a change, no, no harm, no foul, just asking for something different going forward.
Okay, so would you, you would prefer these just to be one?
It's okay to me if you want to break them out, because that gives a realistic picture of the general fund.
Okay.
But if we're looking at the source of the revenue, we have property taxes in one lump, we have timber revenue in two lumps.
Okay. You just want an easy access to what these are combined?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, are you, are you perhaps talking about discussions that have been in the news lately about severance taxes for timberlands? Is that the confusion, or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, that's, that's a whole other discussion that I hope that will get further discussed as we go along in the state. So, but let's, Commissioner Webb, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I think that, that especially during this fiscal year, when we're likely to have some very wide disparities between our projections for revenues and the actual ones, I'd love to see this chart be a little bit more robust and include in the, in the chart itself, all of our revenue sources that are listed to the right. I just think it's, I think it's something that, that we're going to have to be talking about a great deal, and will become more, more important to our citizens, that's for sure. And, and the other thing, I don't, I don't think that Commissioner Thompson, please forgive me if I'm misinterpreting what you said, but I don't think you were talking about the severance tax issue. I think you were talking about, about being very clear about, about the, you know, when and how much of our timber revenues we get. I don't think you meant to include this. The severance is a historical thing, right? Am I?
Longer discussion. Let's, let's forego that discussion now and just forward with the report, but note to self, more later.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so is there any other information on the timber revenue that you would like to know right now that you're not seeing here on the slide?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so moving over to the right side of the slide, we have the other significant revenues. We have our room tax revenues, which we've received 126,000 as of the first quarter, which is actually very low. That is 16% of what we budgeted to expect. Last year, we had about 33%. So we had received last year, the same timeframe, 180,000 room tax revenues, and this year we have only received 81,000. So substantially different. This is due to COVID and the shutdown and room taxes, just the decline in revenues there. Marijuana taxes, we've got, we've received 36,000 of the 100,000 that we budgeted, which is pretty close to what we received last year as well. We had received 31,000 of that in the prior year. So that's gone up just a little bit.
I have a question.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Nebiker. So maybe Monica can answer this. I thought that the last time we got a report that the room taxes were actually more than they, than were expected. Is that right?
When we got our fourth quarter financial report, we did come in above what was budgeted, but this first quarter is their quarter that they were shut down on. So we, when we gave our fourth quarter financial report, we came in above what was budgeted for the 19-20 fiscal year, but their quarterly payment that was due in what is considered our first quarter of the fiscal year 2021 was slowed down because of the, because of the shutdown associated with COVID. Does that make sense?
Yes. Will that difference, like the, the over amount last time, help offset what is under now?
So, so those are those beginning balances that she was speaking of. So anything that we collect beyond what was budgeted rolls over into the beginning balance. And so, you know, so there, there will hopefully be an offsetting amount there as well. But the other aspect is, is that we have noticed that, you know, room, room rentals have really continued to maintain high right now, where a lot of times in previous years, things have slowed down. So I anticipate that this next quarter, when you receive your second quarter financial report, that, that will probably be kind of back in the normal of what we have been in the past. This is just that timeframe when they were essentially shut down and not collecting room taxes.
Thank you.
If I can also just weigh in really quickly, I just want to kind of reiterate that counties by design are much more financially resilient based upon what our revenue sources are compared to cities, some special districts. And so when I look at these numbers, I'm actually feeling pretty optimistic about what, what we are seeing. Things are actually stronger than what you would imagine giving, given the shutdown in the economy. And some of that is because we've had some, some additional revenues come into the organization. But if you just look at the list, we're actually above on a lot of revenue items where we would assume to be through the first quarter. So I just want to reiterate that the county, and counties generally speaking, are really wired financially to withstand this kind of a, of a temporary downturn that we saw with COVID. And again, we'll see, because I think that the wild card is, is really what happens with the legislature. So, because the biggest impact will be in state revenues that are coming back to the county for some of those essential services like juvenile, mental health, alcohol, and drug, public health. So that's where, and that's why having a state lobbyist will hopefully allow us to speak loudly as they set priorities.
Thank you, County Manager, appreciate that.
Okay. So we will continue, um, the next one there is the other state revenues, and those are at ninety thousand, which puts it at fifty-two percent collected of budgeted, which is nice and high. There was on that one, the cooperative electric tax we've already received, that's a one-time, they pay you at the beginning of the year, um, so we've received that in full, which is why that's up high. As for the federal revenues, that's also high, we're at sixty-one percent with the two, two, two-hundred-and-four thousand with the budgeted three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, so sixty-one percent, that is all due to the CARES Act, um, CARES revenue that we've received for that. Oops, I'm on the wrong, too many screens here.
And I'm just gonna throw in there, in regards to what she was just providing an update on, on the CARES Act, that is just the revenue that got, has been reimbursed to the general fund, um, as we receive reimbursements that, for expenditures that occur in other funds, um, that, that, those funds are reimbursed as well, so she's just providing you the general fund reimbursement right now.
Okay, on this next one, we're covering the general fund payroll costs. As you can see, um, throughout the years, it just slightly inclines every year due to salary increases, cost of living, premium costs, um, all the above, they all go up a little bit every year. Um, but as for overall, for the first quarter, um, payroll is at twenty-two-point-six percent in the general fund, so that's right where it should be, so we're right in line with what we budgeted. Um, that's all I have for that one, any questions? Okay, this slide represents overall expenditures through the first quarter for all general fund org units, so these are all the other little org units in there, um, and where they're at, you can see most of them are under that twenty-five percent, percent line here. In the center, there are a couple that are above, and these ones are due to, let's see, what do we have, information systems, it's just slightly above twenty-five percent, that's for some capital equipment, PC equipment that they purchased at the beginning of the year, so that will level out as the year goes on. Um, same with this dues and assessments, that is insurance premiums that are paid at one time, that will level out, and the planning, I believe that is the same as well, some initial year expenses in there, I, I just checked that again today, and they're in line with the budget now, so no longer over. All right, this slide represents the organizational units within the Public Health Department. Again, you can see most are in line with the budget, under that twenty-five percent as of September thirtieth, um, we do have a couple that are above, and that's that household hazardous waste and this emergency preparedness. Um, the household hazardous waste, we do have a, a transfer, an internal service loan transfer that we've made, um, which really bumped it up there, so we'll just keep an eye on that and make sure their expenses are in line with what they budgeted, and, um, we should be fine on that one. Um, as for the emergency preparedness, this one, um, is a grant reimbursement program going on in here, so after talking with Robin, they're expecting to receive for August and September reimbursements, an additional hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars, so that brings that expense down to a twenty-five percent expense as of September thirtieth, so again, it looks high now, but once we get those reimbursement funds, drops it right back down, we'll do our budget adjustment and have it all good there.
Can I ask a question about this?
Absolutely.
Chair? Um, is it, the, the other, um, programs in public health are pretty severely below the budgeted amount. Does that mean that these, that we are not providing these services to the extent that we usually do because of COVID? I, I just would like to know the relationship between COVID and, and, and the fact that, you know, for instance, our immunization action plan, is that something that varies over the course of a year, or is it, are, or are we not able to do it and have, haven't been able to do it in the first quarter? That's sort of my general question about these.
I'm gonna let Monica go ahead and answer that, I'm not sure how they've operated in the past, so feel free to.
Some of it does have to do with COVID, and I don't know if you've heard, um, in some of the updates that Mike has provided, concerns that they do have is that, you know, um, with, with everything going on, um, people haven't been coming in, you can't as easily come in to get your vaccinations, and so there, there has been an impact there, and then in some instances, too, some of the other programs, um, just the, the, um, scheduling of the appointments, it's a lot more difficult, uh, your, your home visits for some of the programs aren't as easily done because of the COVID environment, so, um, so, so yes, COVID has impacted the ability to provide services, but the services are still provided, and they, um, really are trying to encourage, I know, public health is very big on Facebook and Instagram, trying to make sure people are aware, you know, that, um, still come in and get your, your testing, still come in and get your vaccinations, uh, they are, they are available, it's just a little bit, um, it's down because of all of this.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add, um, so now's the time to come in and get your flu vaccine, it's there and available, and they're, they're waiting for you, so make an appointment.
Oops, again on the wrong screen. All right, it looks like we're over our ten-minute limit, so I'll try to rush through here. All right, here's the first quarter roads department, um, and these are all pretty much in line, too, a lot, much under the twenty-five percent, we do have that road admin and support that's over. Um, let's see, what do I have on that? So they've made a one-time annual payment that threw them over as well, but that will level off as those other org units will. And here's all those other org units, the smaller org units that don't have a bunch of other things within them. Um, let's see here, all, they're all looking pretty good under that twenty-five percent. You do have the video lottery that's up, and the bike path that's up, um, as for the video lottery, it's at thirty-eight-point-nine expended, which is a result of a transfer that occurs as funds come in and available, so that will only be made up to the Budget Appropriation Authority, so we don't have to worry about that one going over. Um, the bike path is also above twenty-five percent, that's a result of the completion of the multi-use path project that was started last year, um, in Warrenton. Um, they finished up this current year with the green painting on the path, uh, there on nineteenth Street in Warrenton, near the animal shelter, so that is up, but we're keeping an eye on that one, that should not go over as well. Any questions on any of those? I think that's pretty much all I've got, in summary, overall, funds are in line as budgeted, and those that are running higher will be monitor, monitor, monitoring those, um, for other areas where savings may be realized, so we've got an eye on it, and it all looks good to me. Any questions?
Well done for your maiden effort.
Yes, thank you, I, I was going, I was gonna say that, Commissioner Thompson, so thank you so much for, for being here, and, and you got your first one out of the way, and, and good job. And should we refer to you as Director Carlson? Is that, would that be your proper title?
I am Finance Manager Jennifer Carlson, yes.
Okay, Finance Manager Jennifer Carlson, excellent job.
Thank you so much, thanks for.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Let's move on now to the next item on our agenda, which is, uh, I think the Aldridge Point, isn't that what it is? Yes, discussion of the Aldridge Point parcels and surplus. May we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair, and members of the board. I would like to discuss with you a county area that is pretty remote and, um, takes a lot of time to manage. Clatsop County came into title of two adjoining tax lots at Aldridge Point in the nineteen-nineties, one in ninety-two and one in ninety-five, and they both abut the Columbia River.
Sure, okay.
One of them came in with, um, two floating homes on it. Um, we did not know, we thought the property that we taxed for close was further west, until about early two-thousand, when we got the mapping, and then eventually, we got the tax lot overlays on the map, so we were able to actually realize what, uh, these tax lots were and where they were and what they came with, and so then we contacted the, um, floating property owners, and, um, they were totally surprised because they did not own the land that county had for closed on, so we contacted them and, you know, realized that we had to also enter into a lease agreement with Department of State lands, which requires that the, um, riparian, oh, landowner is the one that has the lease, and then they subsequently sublease to their other people, and so, um, county did that, and, um, we had to drop the lease, which is for fifteen years, and then two subleases, and that lease is due to expire, um, December thirty-first of this year. And, um, with these, uh, floating recreational cabins came also a request, um, from the Community Development Department, which requires two parking spaces per floating structures that are attached to land, and so we entered into license agreements with each of these cabin owners, um, and those are for three-hundred dollars a year, annually, and this, these two tax lots are zoned AN, which is aquatic natural, and no dwelling may be placed upon them, and the allowed uses are very, very limited. And here's the history on the cabins, one has several owners that are friends, and they have passed it down to the next generation, but really no major change in the ownerships, um, but the other cabin has had five ownership changes since we have gone, um, uh, managing this lease agreement, and the updates require a lot of time, work, paperwork, and getting reimbursed for the annual lease payments, because Department of State lands requires that only the property owner with the lease can pay the lease payment, so county has to pay it to the state, and then we have to get reimbursed from these cabin owners, and so, um, that has, uh, required additional time and effort, because one of them is not very good about making timely payments, and we have had to use the threat of county council to get payments in the last two years, so it, it's getting more costly than the money we're getting. Um, and the outlets are not routinely maintained, so as you can see from the pictures, that are quite a few years old, but it has not changed much, I was there, um, a year ago for our float home, um, tour, and went and took a look, and it looks pretty much the same as these photos. Um, so our concern is about the liability, as you can see the pictures, especially with the walkways to the floating cabins. Um, I did consult with the Recreational Land Planning Advisory Committee about these two tax lots, they're not dedicated parklands or recreation sites, but because they're near the Aldridge Point boat launch, um, I wanted to reach out to them, and after discussing possible options, including perhaps they could move somewhere, which they really have no place to go, because it would have to be a like-kind area and nearby, um, they support deeming these two tax lots as surplus and placing them for sale, and our property management policy does set forth the procedure in Section One for categorizing county-owned properties, and anything that we don't really need for county use can be deemed surplus and placed for sale, so at this time, I can entertain questions and also seeking just the consensus if you agree that we should place these for sale, and that the floating red cabin owners hopefully will buy them and manage their own leases and payments.
Thank you, Surfer, I have a question, and I know we're running out of time here, but, um, so if we put it up for surplus, uh, these people that have the floating homes, they would have the option of buying this, the land that's next to them, is that correct?
That is correct, and I'm hoping that both owners would work with each other and, you know, work together on this and come up with a plan.
And if they didn't, and it was purchased by somebody else, if it's no longer county property, it's no longer county headache?
Exactly.
Okay, um, comments from the commissioners? Do we have anybody strong feeling, I, I feel like she's made a good case, they, the, the county's made a good case, and I would, I would be okay with them moving forward with moving this into surplus, does anybody have any, any strong objections to that?
No objection, sounds like the best solution.
Okay, so it looks like from what I can see on my screen, uh, Surfer, is that we do have consensus, so, uh, go forth in, uh, surplus.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you, and, uh, we have, uh, our Emergency Manager Director Tiffany Brown on for the last portion of our work session. Um, uh, Tiffany, if you're ready, take it away.
I am, Teresa, am I able to share the screen and put up a PDF of the excerpts we're talking about tonight? Okay, can everyone see that? It's not as important to be able to read the text as, uh, but, but can people see this?
I believe so, yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chair Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight, I'm here to, uh, bring, uh, the ambulance service area plan update before you, uh, for preliminary review before we ask for your approval at the next board meeting. I put this PDF up, if you saw the packet, this plan is about ninety-three pages long, and I decided, uh, that I would whittle it down to just a few key pages to walk through the update, explain a little, I will be explaining, um, aspects of the plan that we've updated, but also be highlighting just a few pages that I thought might be of particular interest to you, so that you can refer back later, or use, use my talking points to guide you through the plan. Um. So we've got a couple of, we've got three types of changes that occurred, we have changes that occurred because they were required by the state since our last plan, we have changes that occurred because the franchise agreement was updated, and we have changes that occurred because they were just general improvements to the plan. As a, uh, just a brief, uh, reminder, uh, the Board of Commissioners has outlined that Clatsop County will have one service provider for ambulance service, and that provider is currently medics. We'll look at page two next, this is, these are the acknowledgements, there's not a lot to say here, but I, I wanted to acknowledge how long this committee's been working on this, we kicked this effort off, um, at the end of two thousand eighteen, we submitted the first draft, um, in early two thousand nineteen, um, and some of the new requirements were hard to understand, it took us this time to get here. Uh, these are our current members, Mel Jasmine has since retired, but we're leaving him in, he's been a longstanding member, so he'll appear in this plan update, and I also wanted to point about that Commissioner Sullivan began attending these meetings a couple of years ago, and, uh, that's been great to have her with us. We have two current vacancies on the ambulance service plan, I hope to be coming to you to fill those in the next few months.
Could I just ask if you make a special effort to look for folks from way down south or inland for that, because, um, it's a kind of a different set of perspectives from there, I, with, with every appreciation, every bit of gratitude for the folks who've served, kind of the geography is a compelling, uh, source of, of education on this?
Absolutely, Commissioner Thompson, and if you have any ideas or about someone who might be interested, um, uh, either reach out to me or to them directly, and we'd love to give them that.
Thank you so much for that consideration.
Okay, so, let's see. There we go. Table of contents, uh, nothing much to see here, I just thought I would, um, include it as a reference. The next page is the resolution in order, uh, and I only show you this, uh, because this is what we'll be asking you to sign at the next. And I only show you this because this is what we'll be asking you to sign at the next meeting. It is the instrument for adopting the plan. Next, we move to two new updates that fall under the category of improvements to the plan. The map on the left is a response time map that shows MedX's service of the area. And the varying shades of pink show the response time map. On the right-hand side, we have a new fire district map. And I'm showing you this for two reasons. One, to highlight our GIS capabilities. This is a wonderful map of our fire districts. But to pay special attention to the pink colored area to the right of the map around the center, this is the Miss Berkenfeld area. And we're going to talk about that in a few pages. Back to the response time map, you'll notice that that same area is highlighted in gray and not included in pink. And so I'm going to talk about that in just a minute when we talk about the plan update. This is a for information-only page. If you're interested in knowing how we identify those response times and what the different areas and zones of the ambulance service areas are. And I highlighted this page because if you look down at the bottom, it says pre-arranged non-emergency transfers and interfacility transfers. This was one of the sections we had to add and is actually the section that caused the greatest delay. Because although it was required by the Oregon Health Authority to include it in our plan, they weren't able to tell us exactly what that was supposed to look like until a few, until a couple of months ago. And so I wanted to just highlight that area. Commissioner Quila might be particularly interested in this. This section outlines and addresses how MedX's agreements with hospitals and intertransfer to facilities, interfaces, and impacts the county's franchise. This next page is the contracts and agreements. This is a new sec, this is not a new section. We had all of our agreements in the old plan, but there are some new agreements. And now we're getting to the Miss Berkenfeld issue. When we updated the franchise agreement in 2015, one of our eastern communities, what we call frontier counties in ambulance language, said, listen, people in Columbia County can actually get to us faster than the ambulance service in Clatsop County. Can we enter into an agreement so that Clatsop and I and Columbia County take responsibility for those frontier areas? And that's what this memorandum of understanding of entitlements. It's only the first page in some of these instances, just to show you what's here. This next right-hand page is the ordinance that outlines the ambulance service plan. The elements found in the ordinance follow very closely to the table of contents. And this is the new agreement with MedX. I only entered, I only included these first couple of pages. The agreement with MedX didn't change dramatically. They agreed to put another vehicle on the road during this last agreement update. But the biggest change was number 14, the term. When we went to agree, when we went to update the franchise agreement in 2015, we got a lot of public feedback that they, that people thought we should be issuing an RFP for the services. We weren't, we weren't sure that that would be successful. And we weren't sure it was the right avenue. And so we conducted a public survey for MedX's services. And when all was said and done, we decided, under the leadership of Rich Mays, who was the interim county manager at the time, that really pursuing the, and continuing the relationship with MedX was in our best interest. To avoid that 11th-hour discussion about an RFP, we built in a condition, number 14, that said we would conduct periodic assessments with MedX every 18 months. And if by the time the third assessment was conducted and was considered acceptable by the committee, we would then proceed and recommend contracting them. So the last page I want to show you is actually a copy of that 18-month periodic assessment. And what this looks like is that I go to MedX, and Joy Mullins, and I go through this checklist. And we're getting, we're getting ready to do our last one. So at the October 13th committee meeting, the ambulance service area advisory committee approved the draft plan. I'll tell you that we still haven't heard back officially from OHA. But we submitted in August, and it was technically our second submittal. As I said earlier, we'd submitted in January 2019. So we have every reason to believe the plan will be approved. Just to be safe, the committee built in caveat to their motion that staff could make any minor changes that were handed down from OHA. That concludes my presentation. Hope it was helpful. And I'm here to answer any questions in the last few minutes if you have any.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Department Manager Brown, I want to say this is the kind of painstaking, nitty-gritty administrative process that makes the difference between life and death for so many people. I am beyond grateful that you have worked this very fine level of oversight in a way that guarantees public safety. Nothing else would do it except what you've done. So I'm really extremely grateful. Want to go on record to say thank you for all of this.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Anyone else? Tiffany, I think you've done a great job. And I think I know how much work has been done on your part and also all your partners that have served on this committee. Really appreciate it. And I also wanted to give you, understand that the emergency management department has also been assisting, doing the distribution of the PPE in the county. And do you have just 30 seconds to sort of speak briefly about that since you're here in front of us? Because I understand that Tillmook is looking to us for the leadership that you've provided.
Sure. Early on, actually a few months into COVID, we assumed responsibility for distributing PPE to three distinct groups, the businesses through the Chamber of Commerce, the public through the drive-throughs, you've seen the fire departments first, and then cooperators, which are really a lot of our stakeholder partners in the community. And we set up a system to manage that early on using smart sheet software, where all of those stakeholders could simply take a survey every week. And we also acquired a very large number of masks early on that had been deemed not usable for medical use. And we didn't say then how many there were because we wanted to manage expectations. But I'll tell you tonight that it was 210,000 masks. And so we really built a system to start distributing those and getting them in the hands of as many people as we can. As many of you know, the emergency, state emergency board allocated $10 million for PPE for businesses. And we've heard from Business Oregon this week. They're calling counties to find out how that works best. Do counties have an existing system? Or should they be requesting and distributing through the state? And we said that we thought we had a good system to plug into. And we thought it would be seamless for those who are part of that system. And you referred to Tillmook County. Yes, we, this, this system was such a well-oiled machine once we got it up and running that we actually shared the resource with Tillmook County. And we've been managing their survey for business distribution as well. Thank you for asking.
Well, excellent. Excellent. Thank you so much. And one more thing, so that I'm going back to the ambulance, the draft that you went over. So that's coming to us at the next board meeting, correct?
Yes. Correct.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Okay. So we are, thank you so much, Tiffany Brown. And we will end this work session, during this work session. And we will go into the regular board meeting at this time. So this, the work session is now adjourned. Thank you.
Tiffany, if I could ask you to, I sent your request to stop sharing your screen.
Oh, okay. Is it, did it do it now?
No, we still see.
Okay. Get out of here and see if that's...
Are we having a, an executive session tonight?
No.
Did it work yet, Teresa?
No.
Okay. I'll just leave. That should work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Teresa, are we ready to start the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So welcome, everybody. This is October 28, 2020. And welcome to the regularly scheduled Board of County Commissioners board meeting. And the Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board, is now meeting in regular session. It is 6:03. Clerk of the Board, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Nebiker?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Quila?
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Okay. Thank you. So we are all present. May I have an agenda, a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Commissioner Webb?
Yes. I, I propose that we, I move that we approve the agenda with the amendment that item number eight concerning the Safe Fisheries Program be moved to the business agenda.
Commissioner Thompson, seconds.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Hearing no objections, it passes unanimously. And so we now have the agenda approved. We, next portion is business from the public. And this is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda, except public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
No.
Thank you. So we have, that's it for today's public comments. Let's move now to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Commissioner Nebiker? Okay. Thank you. Adopted and seconded, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing no objections, it passes unanimously. Let's move on now to our, sorry, the commissioners liaison reports. Who would like to go first tonight?
I'd like to go first with my name, Madam Chair. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Commissioner Thompson, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I'm really excited because I went to a Woodworks presentation, three hours, called Sustainability from Forest Land Management to Carbon-Friendly Buildings. And very interesting material. I passed it on to several folks. If you'd like more information, it's on the Woodworks website under Education. As part of that, I made a connection with Janelle Leaf Blad, who is the Woodworks Regional Representative. She and I had a follow-up phone call with Professor Shine from the Tallwood Institute, who's working on using mass plywood panels to create modular housing. As part of a follow-up to that, I'm going to Lyons, Oregon tomorrow to visit Ferris Brothers Mass Plywood Production Facility. So I'm excited about that. And I've reached out to a bunch of people. Brian Pugh at the Department of Forestry, because he's in charge of getting more revenue from the forests, AOC and their staff, a bunch of other people. Anybody who's interested, this is something that will be available going forward. So just, so hold it in mind if you want to go to that. I've also been working on broadband, both attending the Broadband Advisory Council and the Broadband Action Team that's part of Coal PAC. So I have more information, but that's just, that's just data bits. And I can give you more of that if you're interested. We're going forward with our stakeholders and partners to provide more broadband shortly, including at the heart of Clatsop County. I think the county manager may include that in his report because that's more his domain than mine. But I'm eager and happy about all of that. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Who would like to go next? Commissioner Quila, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I don't have anything to report. I appreciated hearing from Commissioner Thompson and applaud her honor efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah. I think as I reported in one of our recent meetings, the Workforce Investment Board, which is Northwest Oregon Works now is the acronym, had its annual meeting last Friday, virtually, of course. And once again, I am trying hard to make their financial reporting a little bit more meaningful, especially, and I have succeeded in getting them to make their reports county by county in terms of the service delivery. Most of their programs are either in coordination with community colleges or through Worksource Oregon. And the numbers for the delivery programs in Clatsop County, even though we have the highest unemployment rate, along with Lincoln, the people being served in the Astoria office are consistently lower than those who are served in the other offices in other counties. And this is something that I'm working with them to address or to find out why it's happening. And I'm still working at it. It's difficult issues, lots of excuses that I don't understand. And I think that I needed to dive in a little bit further into that data. The good news is that in recent years, we have actually, because our employment rate has, our unemployment rate has been so healthy, we have received increasingly less money. But since that has now changed, everyone seems to be hopeful that the next Congress will increase the funding for workforce development. Of course, the issue is that that's true all over the country. So the extent to which we really will get increased funds that will at all address our workforce needs is, of course, unknown. But we're on it. And this is, this is something I, an organization I've spent a lot of time with and have been very pleased at being able to, to make some improvements in their reporting requirements. So I'm very pleased. But I'm not pleased with the numbers shown. And I think that's it. We have a NOAA board meeting tomorrow, the Housing Authority Board. Things are very good there now. We have basically done a reduction in force for almost the entire staff and brought in a consulting company that is putting, putting processes in place that will make the organization compliant. that will make the organization compliant with HUD regulations, which are very onerous. But, but so far, we're very, very happy with the consulting company we, we hired. And we'll be meeting tomorrow to appoint an interim executive director, which we desperately need, because we have several large projects in the fire. And, and so we really need some, some onsite direct management. And I'll keep you informed about those. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, thank you. Listening to Commissioner Webb and our unemployment problem, it's heartbreaking how many people are suffering at this time. And I've talked to several people who have not received unemployment yet, if you can believe that. It's just, it's, it's a nightmare. And, yeah. And I've directed them to, you know, our state representatives, and, and I know they've tried. Hopefully, it will come through soon. I don't know how people are managing. I, I just, it's really heartbreaking. The good news for the meeting that I attended of Crest is all the wonderful projects that they have been accomplishing. There was a remote drone footage project tour that we got to see. And they talked about how, you know, the designs are, are worked up and the permitting, final designs, then implementations and research, and then the ongoing monitoring, that's their process. Well, they showed us five projects that were identified this summer. The John Day River Road, which is a county-owned road that periodically flooded, and two plastic culverts came out, and in its place, a bridge was installed. So that allows free flow incoming outgoing water that was impeded previously by the culverts, and of course, so were the fish. That was $550,000. And as I've said before, and maybe you already, everybody knows, mostly the funding comes from Bonneville Power. But the county also participates, and then other counties participate. And some of the cities also participate with funding, at a much lower amount, of course. I think Bonneville contributes $3 million. The Harlow, Harlow Creek at Waukiahcom County near Brookfield, there was a 36-inch culvert and another squash culvert were replaced. I didn't know what a squash culvert was. A squash culvert is just like a regular culvert, plastic culvert, only it's squashed. So it's flatter. Anyway, that was.
Is that by accident or is it designed that way?
No, 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 it was designed, yeah, originally. But they were replaced with a 50-foot bridge, again, to allow the free tidal flow. Native species will be planted, replacing the invasive species that were taking over. And some of those species are aspyrea, willows, and native dogwoods. The West Sand Island near Cape Disappointment. All over this island, there were 65 acres of Scotch broom and gorse. You can imagine, 65 acres. And it was all removed with excavators, and they left the native species, and they gathered seeds from the native species for propagation. And in January, the planting will begin with that. Woodland Islands between St. Helens and Columbia City, near the tip of Savie's Island. Crest is partnering with the Army Corps of Engineers on this project. They did a lot of dredging, which created the equivalent of 25,000 dump trucks of dredge material. 25,000. And they, this created a massive, they used this dredge material to create a massive shallow peninsula land form. Now, they did this, they removed 250,000 cubic yards. They moved it in just a few days. And the reason they were able to do that is they piped it out. They, so they piped it out under the river and then pushed it out over the, extending the land to create this peninsula. If they'd done it with trucks, it would have taken weeks, maybe longer. Anyway, this created a calm water habitat for fish, which is very beneficial. Crest is working with the county on Goal Five with Gail Hendrickson regarding wetlands. And they're providing help with grading proposals and hazard mitigation. Akola Creek may be a future project. The tide gate inventory is taking place on the Oregon side from Gerhart to just upstream of Portland. And so far, inventories have been done to Brown's Mead at 111 tide gates. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. So this is Commissioner Sullivan, and my report, I just wanted to say something that Commissioner Nebiker did about invasive species. I read a, a brief thing online in Scotland. Apparently, they have wild apples. And they want to preserve the native species of wild apples. And so they're asking people not to throw their apple cores out the window when they're traveling, because it's the hybrid apple that we eat from the supermarket. They're not the same as these wild apples. And so it's just amazing when you think about such simple little things like that, that can change a landscape. But thanks. So for my own report, I just wanted to, now I've served on the Northwest Senior Disability Services Board for my entire time here. And I really appreciate the good work that they do. And I, I wanted to give a shout out to them and recognize them. So, and also, in our last meeting that we had, we, what we've been doing the last couple of years on that board is, because it serves five counties, and there's a huge kitchen down in Salem that produces a lot of the food that goes to these different counties. And then we've, we've got that kitchen remodeled and updated. And in the course of the catastrophic wildfires that we have down in that area, they've been able to contract with the Northwest Senior Disability Services, the Red Cross and whatnot, to use this, this kitchen and to, to help, help with all the people that are in need because of these disasters. So they're doing double duty, and I'm just real proud of them. I am also serving on the North Coast Regional Equity and Recovery Council. Monday, Tuesday, we had a meeting, and the topic was housing. And then Thursday, tomorrow's meeting is going to be on education. And there's several other topics. I've included that in my weekly summary. And I will include this week's, if we get them in time, I'll include them in this week's summary. I think it's good that they're asking, but as you know from working on the strategic plan, these are all big topics that require a lot of work and more than just the brief time that we have to talk on these councils. But at least they're asking the questions, so I think that's good. I would also like to thank Lieutenant Christine Hawthorne, bringing up, it's on the consent agenda. I just wanted to give a shout out to all the people that work on the mental health treatment court and the drug treatment court. I, I'm really proud of our county for having these, these programs. Because a lot of folks that are dealing with some of these issues, it's best that they get treatment rather than to be sitting in jail. And I, I think it's also a strong message that people do recover, and we need to remember that, and we need to talk to people that, in our lives that are struggling with some of these issues, that there is help and there is recovery. And I, I think it speaks well of our county that, that we have such, we have these compassionate programs to help our neighbors. And then final, the, the, the quarterly meeting of the Governor's Environmental Justice Task Force is meeting Thursday and Friday, I believe. I gave out information in my last summary to that, but if anyone's interested, you can go on the website and register and listen to what they're, what they're working on. My days are getting busier, and I, I've signed up for Thursday and Friday, but I don't know how much of those meetings I'll be able to attend. And that, that's it for me today. So County Manager, Don Boone?
Chair Sullivan, members of the board, just a couple of things. One is just a reminder that the November board meeting will be taking place on November 4th instead of November 11th due to the, the Veterans Day holiday. That'll be the only regular board meeting in, in November, but we will be having a work session on November 10th to work on the strategic plan. And then December will kind of follow suit. There'll be a work session to talk about the strategic plan on December 1st, and then there'll be the regular board meeting on December 9th. So just wanted to let you and the public know that there is a change coming up. The other is, real quick on the strategic plan. The issue papers are fundamentally done. And PSU is working on the presentation and the discussion for the November 10th work session. So we're making great progress. And again, I just want to thank the board for your leadership. I really, truly believe this will be transformational. I do want to talk a little bit about the broadband, as, as Commissioner Thompson mentioned. One of the recommendations, and this was a, a conversation that was taking place prior to, to the initiation of the strategic planning process with Commissioner Thompson, Representative Mitchell, and others, was taking a geographic area approach to trying to improve internet access during COVID. COVID has just put a spotlight on the inadequacies and the equity issues that come with those. And we have some very underserved communities with internet access. And so we are looking at the Jewel Elsie area first, because it is the most underserved as a percentage of families without internet access. And so there'll be a, a public-private process that will look at the existing infrastructure in those areas and how we can leverage it and improve it in, in, in short order. So we have a consultant that we're using, hopefully, the COVID dollars, some of the COVID dollars aren't, to help facilitate this process. Because just having someone who can set up the meetings and orchestrate the process is really important. Making sure we have all the right people at the table and the right questions are, are, are being asked. Once we get through the Jewel Elsie, then the idea is to have a template that we can then use for other underserved geographic areas. So, so I think that's all positive. And I think in the next weeks, we should know what direction that that's going to take. And then I just wanted to provide some even updated, updated information regarding elections. Tracy shared that the data that she shared during work session has been updated. And so we're actually at 57.4% as of this evening, which is just over 17,000 ballots. And so I would not be surprised, and I mean, I don't want to take any bets on this, but I would assume that we'll probably be in the 85 to 90% turnout range. And so, and I wouldn't be shocked at all if it was closer to 90%. So, you know, I, as we always say, you know, democracy does not work without folks exercising their right to vote. And that's why we obsess about having fair, reliable, and valid processes. And so it's, it is gratifying to see all of the activity when it comes to voting. And I think I will, I will end there. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. I, I was thinking, I would like to suggest that we include the, the Astoriaan article on, on our election, the most recent one, if we can include that in, in our minutes. Maybe the minutes of the work session. I just think that adds additional information. And would that be okay? Would that be acceptable? Okay, thank you. So let's move on now to the next thing on our agenda. Which, just a moment. The, the first one is that we moved the number nine from the consent calendar. And so that will be the first thing on the agenda, on the, on the business calendar. So maybe we have this.
Excuse me, number eight, number eight.
I'm sorry. Not number nine, number nine, number nine.
Chair Sullivan, if I could really quickly, just so Teresa has some kind of clear guidance in her minutes, is maybe we can refer to the former eight as, as a 9A or, yeah, 9A, just so we distinguish that from the end of the consent agenda.
That would work for me. Does that work for you, Teresa?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. Mr. Mesky, are you going to be giving us the report?
Yep, I'll, I'll be there.
Okay, take care away.
So I'm kind of out of breath here. So, so this is our annual contract with Bonneville Power Administration. This is for the funding of our fisheries project. This is the half of the money that we get from, from BPA. The other half comes from Oregon Fish and Wildlife. We raise 800,000 spring Chinook on this contract and 1.4 million Coho that are released at three of our sites in Younges Bay, Tunpoint Mertz, and Blind Slough. And looking for approval of this annual contract. Same contract we've been doing every year since 1993. The past couple of years, there's been a lot of discussion from BPA about downsizing and not funding this project anymore. But last year, they kind of changed their minds. There were some discussions with Oregon Fish and Wildlife, and that defunding has kind of gone to the wayside for now. So we're looking for approval of this contract, so we get funding for another year.
Thank you, Mr. Mesky. Commissioner Webb, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I have a, I have several questions. Steve, could you talk a little bit about how this program of the counties, how it relates to the total quantity of fish that return to our river and estuaries? And, and how much, I, I mean, what, what, what I think the public hears is, you know, our, our salmon fishery is declining. The catch goes down every year. More and more of the referring, returning fish are, are placed there from hatcheries. Could you talk a little bit about that and about what component of the fishery our work contributes to?
So, you know, with that Measure 81 that came out a couple of years ago, the, the drive was to remove all the gill netting from the Columbia River. When our project started back in the 70s and the early 80s, the project was put there as a supplemental to the commercial fishermen in the select areas. It wasn't intended to replace the main stem fishery. Well, with the, with the downsizing of gill netting on the Columbia, it's pushed more of them into the select areas as the primary place for them to catch fish. There still are some fisheries going on in the, in the Columbia that, you know, they haven't removed all the gill nets. But we, our project sites, our net pins, our infrastructure that we have, we can't even raise near enough to replace what they had on the Columbia River. They were, we raised enough Chinook to maybe cover a third, well, not even a quarter of what they usually catch off the Columbia River. So we're, we're by no means a replacement for the river. They're trying to up our production more and more. I, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I wish I had my little chart from work. I, I haven't been in this week, so I don't have that in front of me. But we're, we're a small percentage. We're probably like 25% of what the catch is from the Columbia is what we're bringing in the select areas. And you know, year from year, it's up and down. It just depends on how the fish runs are. We're releasing the same amount of fish, but depending on the survival rate, you may not have a good year. You know, this year, it was supposed to be a poor Coho year, and it actually turned out to be a pretty good year. So what they thought was going to be a bust actually turned out to be pretty good. They had a pretty good take in the bay, so. They had a pretty good take in the bay. So I don't know if that answered your question?
Yes, yes, it has. Could you also, especially after, after Commissioner Nebiker reported about the Crest activities that are going on? Could you talk a little bit about the project at Big Creek and Little Creek?
I'm not totally familiar with that. So there, I, I think that's some of the BPA funding. You know, we just had our initial meeting last week. They're looking at providing some more habitat in the river for the chum salmon and other returning salmon. You know, the property adjacent to Big Creek County Park, back in the seventies, they had a dredging operation. They removed, removed a lot of gravel from that section of the stream. And then after that project, this, Big Creek actually moved from next to adjacent Harv property. It jumped the berm that they had built in the graveling operation and it flooded the gravel area where they removed the gravel. Well, now the river has shifted further west to the far west side of that property and it's scoured to the point that it's intersected with Little Creek. So now Little Creek dumps into Big Creek and it, and Little Creek lost about two miles or a mile and a half of stream. So the water is flowing into Big Creek instead of paralleling Big Creek all the way down to Napa Slough. So they're looking at potentially maybe trying to get Little Creek back into its banks and getting the two creeks separated again. They're just starting the initial surveying. I know they talked, we, they started this project once about eight years ago and then they kind of walked away from it because they were having troubles getting permission from the landowner. They didn't want anything to do with it. It sounds like the new landowner is willing to allow them to come on the property, but I don't think they've received permission yet. So that's kind of, from what I gathered at our last meeting, that's kind of on hold right now until they get their permission from the adjacent property owner. So they're going to be doing a big study down through there.
I'm just, I guess I'm a little concerned, given our, our recent Lewis and Clark Road outcry from residents, that I hope we're, we're doing a good public relations program with our citizens who live out there. So that they understand, you know, the importance of this project and, and that it is a collaboration among, ODF and W is involved, right? And, and I think Crest is and I, and I think the, the North Coast Watershed Council.
Yeah, the, yeah. The North Coast Watershed Council is the one that's heading it up. They're the ones that kind of kicked this off and are trying to get everyone to get together. So they're kind of like the lead of the project.
So I think maybe it would be a good idea if we made sure that the county manager's office was fully aware of this interaction with our citizens out there. So could kind of, you know, be involved and, and in tune and maybe have us help with some of the public outreach.
Okay.
So, thank you. I, I, I moved this because I, I think that this is one of the great unsung programs that the county runs. And if, you know, touring the net pins is one of the highlights of my year. So I, and I think this is a program that just doesn't get enough notice that, that the county is in the business of, of increasing the supply of, of salmon in our, in our fishery. And it's, it's, it's a huge impact. So anyway, thank you, Steve and your staff. I know you're, I, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. And before I ask for a motion to approve this contract, I also wanted to heap a little bit of praise on Steve Mesky. I am attending the, I had this here. It's, I want to make sure I get it right. The Northwest Oregon Outdoor Recreation Check-In, which is occurring about every two weeks with the county chairs and the state parks and the National Park out here. And Steve has represented. I'm there, but I depend on Steve to give us the expertise from the county. And one time Erica did when he wasn't there. And I just wanted to publicly thank you, Steve and your staff, for knowing as much as you do and bringing that forward and representing us in our region. I, I really appreciate that and, and I shall see you on tomorrow, actually. So Commissioner Quila, looks like you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Well, I would just echo what everybody has been saying. And this is a program that's really near and dear to my heart. I know my dad worked on it back in the, you know, seventies, in the mid-seventies, when this was first getting off the ground. So, you know, it's very, very important to the few gill netters that, commercial fishermen that we still have left and on the lower Columbia. And just to thank Steve for all his work. And certainly if we get into an issue where funding's at jeopardy, I hope we can be engaged as a county commission to do whatever we can that that doesn't happen. We certainly want to see this program funded as in the years to come. Very, very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yeah, it's also very important to our economy. It's very important to, I mean, yes, of course, the fishermen, but also to the restaurants, the, the people who buy fish at the fish market. To me, I love to eat it. So all good. It's very important. We're very blessed to live here where we can have this wonderful product for ourselves and our families. And unless there's more questions, I'd like to make the motion. If that's all right.
Go ahead, Commissioner Nebiker.
I move that the board authorize the county manager to sign intergovernmental agreement number 86170 with the Bonneville Power Administration in the amount of $479,560 and authorize the county manager to sign contract amendments.
Commissioner Thompson, seconds.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, could you, I'm sorry. Is there any questions on behalf of the commissioners? Okay, Commissioner, I mean, Clerk of the Board, can you call a roll call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Nebiker?
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson?
Hi.
Commissioner Quila?
Hi.
Commissioner Webb?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi, and I want to thank Commissioner Webb for bringing, bringing this off the consent calendar. I think this was very interesting and, and thank you, Steve, for hanging in there. So.
Thank you.
And the vote is unanimous? You got your support from the board. We have unanimous in this, in the motion. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Clerk of the Board, can you read, read the motion?
The motion is that the board authorize the county manager to sign the IGA number 86170 with the Bonneville Power Administration in the amount of $479,560 and authorize the county manager to sign contract amendments.
Okay, thank you so much. That is passing unanimously. Let's go on down to the next item on our agenda, which is concerning the Fair Board appointment. May we have the staff report for that? Is John Lewis here?
Yes, I am, Commissioners. How are you this evening?
Hi, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Okay, so we had a vacancy on the Fair Board. We received two applicants and both the Fair Board and the staff are recommending that Matthew Bellingham be appointed to the Fair Board at this time.
Okay, and my understanding is that, that the term of this appointment will go to the end of the December of this year. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Any questioners, any questions from the commissioners or Mr. Lewis? Okay, I will entertain a nomination for this board. Commissioner Quila?
Yeah, I would recommend, or I would nominate Matthew Bellingham for the completion of the term through December 2020 on the Fair Board.
Commissioner Thompson, seconds.
We don't need a second if we're doing a nomination. So, so let's, so we now, the first nomination is, is there, I'm sorry, I don't, you know, my name thing. It's Matthew. I'm sorry. Could you give me?
Matthew Bellingham.
I knew it was Matthew Bellingham. Okay. So the nomination is for Matthew Bellingham to, to complete the, the appointment for the class of county board determining December 31st, 2020. Clerk of the Board, can you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Quila?
Yes.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Webb?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, so the nomination.
We can't hear you.
Okay, Clerk of the Board, read the, the vote. The vote, it was unanimous. We now have Matthew Bellingham as the, to fill this, the slot for the Fair Board, completing the term through December 31st, 2020. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Lewis, for being here this evening.
Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Now let's move on to the second, the third item on our agenda, which is the IGA with the City of Astoria for Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Funding for COVID-19 Response. This is on page 225 of your agenda. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is something that has been several months in the making. Clearback in June, I believe, is when we started working on this. And, and it is a grant through Business Organ to help purchase PPE for COVID response for first responders. And to expedite the process, even though we started this clearback in June, you have to, it, it is much quicker if you have recently applied for CDVG grant funds, because then they already have part of the application process in place. And the City of Astoria has more recently applied for these funds. And so therefore, they are who the, who the grant application is, who will be submitting the grant application. And then in conjunction with the city, the county would be purchasing this PPE equipment and distributing it to those first responders. And it's up to an amount of $50,000. The agreement with the City of Astoria is to have Coal Pack manage this for them. So that way they're not having to have additional staff time in an effort to do all the required reporting for this grant. So essentially, this is a partnership between the City of Astoria, Coal Pack and the county to try and help get more PPE purchased out for the first responder community. And again, this is just, this is inviting the city to apply. So we're, we'll still be waiting for the final application and approval of funds. This is just one more step in the process.
Thank you, Monica. Did the, any commissioners have any questions for, for our Assistant County Manager?
Are you ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
Just getting to that, yes. So I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves that the board authorize the chair to sign the IGA with the City of Astoria to facilitate the administration of the grant program for the Emergency Public Services Grant in the amount of $50,000.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any second?
Second.
Commissioner Nebiker, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, Clerk of the Board, could you call a roll, do a vote call, please?
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Quila?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye. Okay, so it passes unanimously that we have authorized the board, the chair, to sign the IGA with the City of Astoria to facilitate the administration of the grant program for the Emergency Public Services Grant in the amount of $50,000. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you, County, Assistant County Manager, for all the work that went into this and, and also all the work that you are doing along with the staff concerning all these COVID streams of funding and whatnot. It's enough to make you dizzy and you've been hanging in there and I really appreciate it. So any, any other comments for the good of the order?
Madam Chair, if I may just one?
Sure.
I'd, I'd like to, Commissioner Thompson, just acknowledging staff, including the public information staff, for talking to us about how we can reach out and listen more effectively to people all over the county and beyond, so we can build community even better than we already do. Having wonderful conversations with the public information officer and the rare volunteer about how we as commissioners can talk about what we're doing, but more importantly, how we're listening to people out in the neighborhoods. Neighborhood livability is such an extreme concern right now and it's overlaid with COVID concerns. It's overlaid with climate refugees. It's overlaid in a lot of different, very complex areas. And I'm heartened that staff is gathering itself and helping us relate more effectively to everybody all over the county. So thanks to staff for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else? Okay, well, I, I, I thought we might have to reschedule this, this meeting today. I know it wouldn't have been, it would have been against the rules, but the World Series ended last night, so we did not need to reschedule this meeting tonight. So anyways, thank you very much and this meeting is adjourned. Take care all.
Thank you.
Thank you.